Yeah, fat ala fatu le pa iya ma'urunga le. Remota ni'utupu ma'na'i pa iya fo'i ma'urunga. Na tu nu'u. Ta'aua vina tulanga ya tofi'u tu malo la'utoufionga ya lisentoa. Ya ona neitaiao sa'aufa ina. Ya e fa'talatalano'a ina ya tili le tulafono ta'aufa'afi le pili ta'aufa'afi. Mole to'aya ya iya onisi tulanga teu teu. Ole tofi'u Kovana, male Lieutenant Kovana. Ya ina iya manino mafamautuu. Ya ma'ia ta'ofiai ya fisi li sa'afisi li ya e fo'i ya tulanga o'ia tofina i pa'atanga o'utona'yatu. Ole'ala'ua tu inama'iai le tulafono lea ya e to'ea fa'manino le le iai tulanga le nofo itu tonu ole'atu nu'u. Ina iya mautuu ma'ia loa ya o'e ole'ata'auva'ua moli tofi'u. Ya o'ilato'e na nofo tonu ile'atu nu'u. Ya e le'ontanga ta'enonofu nonofu ifafo. Ya fia'tamo'e le tofi'u sa'au lo'a inei. Ya ma'mauaile avanoa e ta'ufutuli iai pa'atanga ile'atu nu'u. Ya sa'u iasitaimio na va'ala'ua leo mo'rimau fatu'ulanga ina neitaiao. A'ala'ua sa'u ni'asetala'upu pu. Ya e amata inai le ta'to ngadwanga mafa'afitai iai la'anga'le'ayio leli. Ta'aua'ina lo'tousoifu malata'au'au. To'aya'ulia ma'ia le ne'iaso'fu. Na tu'alu ma'tautamaa. Ma'tautifalatalata'iu'uruma'le ne'utula'ua le aso. Si'ta'ua ina e fa'afonga'ua'au vatu sa'ma'tauta leo. Fa'ale'ua ile'anga'anga fa'afitai la'upu'utau ma'la'upu le fa'soa. Omafa'iai yo'na ma'tauta nofo iya remota le neitaiao le soifu'a omaua. Male'au la'ue fas'au mai yo ma'tautanga. Ie fo'i ina ma'aua talai le neitaiao nisi yo ma'tauta usoa sen'toa. Ua'au'toto'iai la'ufionga na litino male'ema'ua'ua le malosi atatoa. Ma'tautitalo tau'taululu finangalo e fo'i le malosi. To'ea fo'i manui'a mai itu tonu le morta isitaimio momo'ua le neva'iaso. O'asol'una'i. Ma'tautitalo fo'i mo'lo'ua'anga le'ayi yo ma'tautanga. Ina iya maua tiri aise malosi le nga'ta litino a'ole'anga. Male'poto male'ma'afa'ufau. Mafayayo na fili fili titau. Imata'upu. Ua to'aila morta au'ase manui'a ole'atu nu'u. E'tai'ua le ne'iaso. Lo'lo'ua'ala tau ma'ona tulanga fa'le tonu. I sa'unga le mu'fe malanga'ingai lunga'ua'au'ala. Ina iya to'ea fo'i manui'atu isitaimio momo'ua ya'ingai sen'tua. Pe'a ma'ae'ala ma'tauta ngadwanga. Ma'tautitalo lea male'anga'ala di'ef'a'ma'ole'afailava'ua iainia ma'tauta fa'ai'unga fa'le tonu. Pe'a fa'aluwa'ufasixi ona'ua le'faya. Male'ma'afa'ufa tonu ma'tauta ngadwanga. A'au'a'au mai yo ma'tauta lotu ina iya ma'tauta faya'ime'ua umalava. Ya tusamata tau malo finangalo. Taloi'a ala le swafalo'ua'alu Jesu Kiriso'ua ol'ama'ala'ua to'ai. Amen. Ya ol'ata'tou ilalonga ua va'aluua mo'le'tai'au le ne'ima le aso'tai'au. Ya ona'ole'lei talafi'anga'aimai ua ta'to mo'rimau. Ole'ua a'avan'au mai mo'rimau le malo le ofis'au'le Kovana male'ofis'au le ofis'au'tau tau samoa. Ya ona'oto'tou ngia le neitai'au. Ua'ole'ua iya'ia ta'to mo'rimau ua omona tu inama'ia'ula'tou swafa. Ya ole'a ta'tou fatalatalano'a ina iai. Ya ni'ula'tou ta'ofi manifautu'anga. Ya. Ya, okay. Ya ai'ole'ua to'aimai le su'i ole'ofis'au Kovana le sungali le lo'a iya fautua. Ya'ole'ua mafayio na mawala'ava'noa le neitai'au e'au mai. Ya e to'efapula'atu ole'tulafono le ta'to pili tolus fuluiva tesilima. Ya ole'to'efatulanga ina le'a o'anga'va'ua o'o'e e fia'tau'utuli moli tofi'u. Na i'aila mangamomo'ua le na'ava'tu'ai. To'efapula'ina le'uinga ole'tautoto'ole tangata Amerika Samoa. I tu tonu ole e fia'tau'utuli fia'tamo'e moli tofi'u. Na i'aila sawa mangamomo'ua le na ina iya to'efaa'upu le lei. I le Nationale United States etupunga mai Amerika Samoa. Olona'tupu'anga Amerika Samoa olona'uinga se'tanga etupunga mai se'tanga na fanau Amerika Samoa swainisi. Ia pole United States. Ina i'fa'manino a'tili ye tulanga ya'au'a inei. Aw'ulia se'aso'omomo'ua ai mafayayo na tulai mai. Onitanga ta'ese matu'ale iai a'ase pitoto Samoa. I'anga'va'ua mo'li tofi'le'a. Ya ole mangaluua ya ole tulanga le nofo itu tonu Amerika Samoa. Na'efa'apula mai iai eteta'ua ona nofo fa'asu so'oo. I tu tonu le luas'fulu fa'amasina. Aile'yo'oo ina fai'ala'ana ta'ausanga e fia'tamo'e mo'li tofi'Kovana po'ole Lieutenant Kovana. Ya ma'olo'ofa'aua Winnebago ya le limata'ausanga. Ya o'se'tanga soifu'a itu tonu Amerika Samoa le limata'ausanga. Ya a'uisi va'anga'uma. Ya'olo'ofa'aua pe'a'ole'si esesenga le sawa mangaluua le na. Ole'limata'ausanga lea ya'ato'ole limata'ausanga aile'ifai'ala'inga le petition. Ele'fa'pe'a ole'limata'ausanga le safa'upu talu'ai. Ile'ya'ato'ole limata'ausanga ai mafayon'le petition. Pe'a fai'ele'yo'oo le aso'le palota au'ato'a ina'ala na limata'ausanga. Ole'suinga'ala le ta'to tita'umfaya i'ia fa'ma'oni'ala na limata'ausanga ona nofo i Amerika Samoa. Aile'yo'oo le aso'le fai'ala'le petition. Mole tofi'Kovana po'ole Lieutenant Kovana. Ya ole'sesenga na'ome'ana'aluua'olo'au mai le tulafono ta'aufa'afi le'a. Ole ta'to pili le'a e palota esese iai tofi'u. Ya ole'ato'ina mai isitaimio momo'ua pe'a to'ea fo'i mai ta'to malolongu mo'lo'ana ilo'ilaina. Ya ai'ole'ata'tou e'aini fisi li. Ya sa'au no'iala'ufionga le presidenti.
Fatai'ala'ufionga le etai komiti neitai'au fatai'fo'i le tu'alu. Pa'alonga pe'a'au ina le masina etou'ufionga lisentoa. E'ua fo'i ina fa'le tonu tulanga le tau ya'olo'ta'umfaimela. Pa'wana me'ala clarification le isiu le'tou ng'ola fama'ole molele. Le'fa'pe'a Samoan ancestry. Ole fisi li a'fa'pe'a fanau se fanau se'saina poskole'ia inei. Ele'anga'va'ala'ana ran'ame'ani sa'au. Ai'arula ta'mititi ne'sitseni Amerika infainan ran.
Ele'ay. Eteta'ua o'se'tanga ta'anga'va'ua etamo'e moli tofi'Kovana male Lieutenant Kovana. O'sona'tua'a eteta'ua'ana ya'isona'tua'a ole Samoa.
Al'anme'efema'ia either a United States citizen or a United States national. So'alonga'inga'ala'ua ala'ua ta'tou le. Let's take for Jake King. He ran for governor. He was a US citizen. Ele'iso'la Samoan ancestry.
Yeah, either a United States citizen or a United States national of American Samoan ancestry.
Yes, re'ua'uma'mlamai pe'a'le tonu ale'ta'tanfai'puipui. Wa'fanaua tangata ne'saina mokole'ia fanau ne'ona'sinale. Ilaro ta'tulafono tu'ai le'ina inei. They can run for governor and lieutenant governor. Or puipui'inga'ala le'a ele'tou enfayai. Arfisi li la'asi itseni na'tanga le mai Amerika. Emfayala'sitseni Amerika. Ele'ise pi'tanga Samoa ona tamoe'fa'Kovana male Lieutenant Kovana. Ya. Ua umalala fisi li.
Apasiala ta'to tulafono le'a masaina Kovana ele'mfai. E'pe'a le'ta'efapula'atu. Ole'sitseni por'Nashnale e'iai sona'tupu'anga Samoa. Ale'elaso'ana pito isam ile Samoa. E'tu'sape'sitseni ele'mfayon'tamo'e fa'Kovana. Ole Lieutenant Kovana.
Ai'opere'tsi'ane singan ngiku'ulafong'ulungu.
Oe'ele'iasa'utelang'ona e'iai'ia. E'iai'ula to'ole'a faya iya'ia tulanga ua ele'mfayao na. E'iai'le tulanga ole'upu'moni'ia i'aila ona tulanga fute'ena'ai male'fa'va'io'le malo Amerika Samoa. Ai'ole'anga'anga le'a ta'to te'avatu'ua'le tulafono le pe'a'ntanga'iana i talu'ai ole ta'to tulafono. Ta'to to'ea fo'i ile'anga'anga ole treaty. Treaty of Session. Famili Treaty of Session ole'matafayoi'le malo Amerika. Ia puipui le'anga nu'u. Ma'anga'ifanua asamoa mo' Samoa. Le'anga tonu na'ala e fa'va'ia'le tulafono le'a. Ole puipui'inga o'anga nu'u ua afai'etatala le me'ala e'tanga. Ele'ni'ula'tou pito Samoa. E'iai'le avanoa ole'atafe'a le'anga nu'u. Tafe'a ta'to wanga'ifanua. Ona'olato'ua ya ele'iso'la'tou tau'toto'ulanga i'ele'ole'ia.
So qualifications la'ia ina e sa'au no'a. Na'Kovana male Lieutenant Kovana ele'aplay'ale house ele'aplay'ale su'i ifafo.
Yeah, ele'ole'iai'le malosi tulafono le'taimi le ne. Ai'ole'pi'ol'fa'va'aimoni'le na ole'suinga le ta'umfai. Ina iya fa'malosi'ia'ia ile tau'muli muli o ta'tou feng'afa'ale malo. Ile'fa'anga'inga tusutusia male malo tele. Ia fiso'us'ani la'tou epuipui ang'ifanua ma'anga nu'u Amerika Samoa. Mo'ona'tupu'anga muli. Ole'anga'ala na'ea'ia ta'umfai. Oa'ia'ia'epule'a ma'ave'iai tofi'ta'au'ia'ole'atu nu'u. Ia'iaiso'la'tou so'otanga male'atu nu'u. Ya pe'a'le tulanga'ala ele'ose'sotanga'ala e'ala i'letulafono pe'e'ala ifeng'ama'lo a'ol'sotanga e'ala ile'toto' male'tupu'anga fa'asamoa. Niso'ifu ma'iai yo ta'tou ma'tou ta'tia mai le tia.
E'oma'ua'tu'ole'anga'moni'afu'na le'a alainta'ufayatu e puipui'le ta'to'atu nu'u. Walta'to tulafono le inei. A'fanau fanau a'fanau ng'ia'ngi ole'amesaina. A national. They can run for governor and lieutenant governor ku'ulafong'ku'ai le'ia'ngi.
Mo'oi.
Or ku'ulafong'ale'ole'akapui iai.
Sa'au le.
A'ole'hous'la'ia male'ole'akakala. Ele'isu'iala'anga'va'ua male'ma'su'i ifafo sa'au.
Enmo'oi'la.
E'ua'uma'ufisi li'ia se'ku'akula.
Fatai. Ya pe'ia'sesi fisi li'eli'ivalawina ta'to mo'rimau la'ufionga sen'tua male'sa'au le?
Iya'tu no'asau no'a le'ufionga presidenti tulanga le'tai'au talofatua'atu ta'tou. Madu remota neitai'au or'sunga setekomiti. E'se'ufisi li fama'ole le'la'utusilia numela'luu ole'lopepa numela'luu. Ole'aa arule'ila'olmela'ala'utusima'ia'ile numela'cholu puipui'cholu puipui'tasi. Pe'a'omalpi service with armed services of the United States. Ko'so'ifu ma'risi mela'ala service with the United States government of any of each agency instrumental. Ole'ufisi li'ole'ute'uma'mlamai le male'efat'ulanga me'uma'ia'unga i. Ole'ufisi li. Afai'asitien se'isi ole malo o'se'tanga ta'fo'i fanga'wanga'ila'ala'ole malo tele. Inei Amerika Samoa for continuous five years. Oknola a continuous five years le'a le'asitien'ia. O'qualify fo'i le'tanga le'a wa'ala'ua midu'uma'le limata'ausanga le'a ole'fo'faina ole'partition le'a. Wa'inclura'fo'i tu'ama'le luata'ausanga le'a lospe'ala mai. Al'exemption la'ute'ufisi li'tu'ai. Uinga'ia ini'se'ua'alo le'atu nu'u. Umalatous'fulu limata'ausanga ifafo ate'ua osifima'ina pe'ol'koska'le fa'alaramai fa'pe'a. Ya pa'pena'fo'i recruiters mai sia'ofis'ala malo. I sa'uni'nofo i'le limata'ausanga etautu'ai langa'under the military. Ia pole agency fo'i ole'United States le asitien'ia'ngi. Ke'lovu o'qualify fo'i le'tanga le'a. Ole'iasisi exemption le'isa'le oni'tu exemption.
Na'ole ta'to tulafono lo'ia inei. O'e'umalo ta'utu'aila malo tele'ala'le militari. Na'ala'le militari. Ele'el'ese'ula'tou resident. Tu'sa'ala pe'a'alu'le militari le luas'fulu tolus'fulu ta'ausanga. Ele'lusile resident ol'tanga'ala'le. Pe'a fai'qualify isi va'anga'uma ole'tulafono ole'Samoa nofo i Samoa. Na'alu'aila'le il'militari. Ya ke'auki'inga'le me'ani. Na'alu'aila ele'lusila'ka resident.
Ole'ufisi li'fayatu.
Ale'mafula'ala'na ya'ele'ena tia ile'taimi o'lo'ua'ule'ofis'ala malo. Sa'ma'tau'ua'ia'ia'ile tulanga le ina iya mafai'ona. Mawalu le'penfiti le tangata o'lo'ofa'aunga Amerika Samoa olona Home of Record. Ole'tanga'le militari la'olo'Home of Record Amerika Samoa ele'lusila'ana residence. Ai'ole Amerika Samoa o'fa'aunga California mahawai mai sisitete ol'ala'tou Home of Record. Tangatalana'alusila'tou ya'ala'tou residence. Ole'sesenga ol'tanga'ye Home of Record i Amerika Samoa. O'ala'tou la'fong'a etuto'ei pe'a'umona ave'ala'tou refund. I'ala'tou tutongifa'ale malo. O'va'anga etuto'ei ol'ala'tou la'fong'a iya esa'uma i Amerika Samoa. Tu'sa'ala valama tangata ole'ia'feng'alu'anga itu tonu Amerika Samoa. A'ole Amerika Samoa e Home of Record i Hawa'i. Ele'fo'i mailanala'fong'a iya ta'tou. E nofo i'ia itu tonu le federal government. So'ole'sesenga'ala na'ea'ala'ia'ona ona'fai'ole tulanga le'a. E'tu'sa'ala ole Home of Record ol'ia'fa'au'ala'le ta'utu'ala'le tangata le'a ile'atu nu'u. A'ol'tanga'ala'ia Home of Record ifafo. Ia ele'mfai'ta'tou apa'ia'ia'au'au ol'ia'fa' e'tu'sa'ala'ng'iai tau'tua ol'ia'fa'alu'le setete'olo'olo'ofu'ai. Ole'sesenga'ala na'ome'aluua.
Le'fatai'atu ole'ute'uma'mlama pe'a'nsau no'a'ufionga. O'te'ilo'fo'le'ale'mta'upone'esa'talano'a ina momo'ua. Sa'ie fo'ufisi li'mta'upule pe'a'ne'asau no'a. Te'mnatu'e e'se'le me'ana'ka'ama'ia'le me'ala pe'a'ne'asau no'mai. Ole'ufisi li'fayatu this is a very rare issue. It's a very rare chance. E'alu'akanga'ala malo. Pa'spen'los'fulu lima'ka'ausanga out there somewhere in the States. Al'unga lima'ka'ausanga e'fa'ia'uma'ia'ngi po'unga o'se'le recula posisi'anga'luanga. Wa'epa'ua'le le'fo'i le'me'le. Eku'uma'ia'chance in your service in the United States. Malala'ala me'ala'ala'ala'ala'ka'ala'ala'la'ku'ua. Wa'ire'fayaku. A governor can be elected from, I mean, somebody can put in for a lieutenant governor or governor. Only twenty years in the military. I sa'au'of'arankovanga wa'ala'ua midu'uma'ia requirements. Uma'ia'pa'ua'ali requirements enka'upule'ole continuous. La'anga'luu ka'ausanga'ka'wen'ia'ia le'ala'ua midu'le lima'ka'ausanga le'sitien'ia'ngi. Al'me'le'sa'ung'ua me'ia. Ke'lokua e'se'fo'i disi'anga'ua'ala'infay'anga'anga'va'akakau.
Ya'afai'ala. Ya'afai'ala'na Home of Record o Amerika Samoa. A'ua'ol'tanga'ala'le transfer mai esau'ina il'militari. I fa'ana'ufafo sa'anofo ifafo. Ol'ia fo'i Home of Record i California. Ele'mfay'nu'su'ia'ala'anga resident. Ole'anga'ala'le pili le'a ol'tanga'ala'aluatu inei o'resident. E fa'au'ala'anga residency. A'ol'tanga'ala'le sa'ua mai'fafo survey'ina il'militari le limata'ausanga. Ele'ose resident o Amerika Samoa. Ole resident ol'sitete ifafo. Ole'sesenga'ala na.
Me'la'anga'ala'ala'ka'omu'ai'ki'mai'me'ala ole resident fa'afu mai le fa'af'ngi.
Wa'esa'ul'anga'ala na survey'ina Amerika Samoa. E'sau'ole resident o California po'au hawa'i. Ele'ose resident o Amerika Samoa. A'ol'tanga'ala'le Home of Record i Amerika Samoa. Na'aluatu'ua inei ole resident o ta'tou survey'le militari le resident o ta'tou. To'ea fo'i mai fanga'wanga itu tonu le militari inei ole resident lava' Amerika Samoa. Ele'ia'se'suinga'ala'anga residency. Ai'le'mfay'ala'le tulafono le'ona liliu'le residency o California. E fai'ma resident o Amerika Samoa. Se'iva'anga'ala ua'alu'ese'male militari. I fo'i mai nofo tu'ma'ina'le limata'ausanga. Ina'tu'ama'ua'ala'anga residency le mana'ami'ala tulafono. Pa'ua'ala'ona'uinga'ala'ua su'i mai lo'ala'anga resident. Ole'tou'le resident o California. Ale'fo'i mai resident i Amerika Samoa.
I fa'fe'ala'pa'esa'usi'otou'ala'uma ta'tou'fanau le sa'au'la'ifai'fafo. I sa'uni'asitien'ia'le limata'ausanga tasidope'luu ta'ausanga onofo inei Amerika Samoa. Losui le'ala'ua resident'ia'ua'ala'ua'elo'fa'ala'ng'ia'and so forth and so forth. Me'la'anga'ala'ka'ua'ku'ua. Pe'iese'ia ke'ua tipaid'le me'ala down the road.
A'mela'fa'fo?
Me'ala'oke'ua. Oke'ua'ku'ua le'ka'unga ng'ifakasia'le me'ala'ala'home of records ma'le'ala'anga'ka'asa'au me'ala'ala. Because we want to know, it's a rare case. It doesn't happen that often, but it's a rare case. Ia'make sure'ala intact. Ile'ku'ua question'inga'le ku'ulafong'ua. Ia'ku'ua pe'a'ufionga'ala'olo'aunga'akunga'unga'ong'ala'le. Le home of records are a little bit different from e'sau'ua'ima'yo'asau'ufanga'ngi. Wa'esp'ris'ao'ia'wa'luu ka'ausanga'ngi pe'kasia'ala'fa'ala'la'va'la'me'fa'pe'a'anga. Wa'ino'ua'kong'le community wa'iel'ala'le resident'ia. Ke'lovu'ala'pa'okomeki'anga'as resident'io' or what, but I think.
No. No. Se'longa'su'ia'ia'ala'anga' resident. Asu'iro'ala'esa'ua paloka'ingai paloka'anga'ka'oku'angi uma'ia survey'ina. Ole'fa'ailanga momo'una'ua'mana'au'ia'avi'ese'ala'anga resident ile setete ifafo. Ai resident'ia'ngi. E'tulanga'ala'ia'ime'fa'pe'a'ia fa'ma'oni'ia'ole longa intention. E'sui mai longa resident itu tonu Amerika Samoa. Aile'nofo inei paloka'Californiya i paloka'Californiya. I sa'ufai mai'au'ole resident'ia'ngi ere'ku'pu'me'anga. Ya sa'ung'ua'ala'ufionga le'mitai. Sa'au no'a'ile.
Le'ufionga le'taita'le komiti'ia bisfo'i'le fia'tu'ale presidenti. Salo'lo'ua'uma'mlamai le fa'pula. Ele've'pete'luatu'ina Samoa e'alu'au'tou'ala malo. Ai'le'au'ave'a o'e' male'skanka'va'ele'ele'mofu'e o'e' men'na. No'no'uinga'ala'ka'mtalanga'ala'pa'utote'alu'ole'tanga'ia'ole'le malo. E'ole malo se'longa'us'au'tonu'lopepa ol'antautu'ala malo o'ia'ole resident'ala Samoa. E'alu'ala'men'na. A'ua'pe'a'alu'ia Amerika'ala Home of Record. I fa'pe'a ke'alu'ke'idi'ngasamoa'anga'ufa'Samoa. A'ala'ku'ua'ole malo ele'ave'a o'e' Amerika Samoa fai'ma Home of Record. Ele'ose' resident'ao fo'io'osamoa. I fa'pe'a'ala'anga'ka'akala'va'ala'epu'si'ala'ka'oku'oku'oku'le militari'ng'ia'ao'iai. O'sa'América Samoa'ala Home of Record. Or ka'akala'ala'la'la'fai'tau'ole Home of Record. I fa'ala'ka'pe'a'ala'fa'na'ula'ifafo'io Amerika. A'ala'ku'uka'oku'oku'ofa'eme'ala Amerika'ala'ka'elu'ki'Home of Record'la'ia ta'tou'ina Amerika Samoa. Se'longa'utu'ua o'e' Amerika Samoa fai'ma pe'a'nsau no'a le komiti. Ai'afapela'ala'tam'samoa por'ten Samoa ol'ia'fafo sata'tu'ala malo. Ele'ose Home of Record o'ia' Amerika Samoa. Ele'se'tanga'ala'América Samoa. I fa'ifoi'mai Amerika Samoa fai'tau'ia'alu'taimi. O'sa'ua'pe'a'ne'asau no'a. Al'limata'ausanga'fo'i mai'ia'asamoa ta'utu'ia'asamoa. Ya'au'ave'ala'asamoa fai'mana'Home of Record. A'ali'fa'pe'a'alu'akua'anga'ia'le militari'Home of Record o'o'e'ia'fo'i Amerika Samoa. Se'lo'anga'ala'va'au'ave'a o'e' Amerika Samoa fai'ma Home of Record. Wa'ang'pe'a'ali'xi'le me'ala'utupu'ifafo'ia'alu'fanau'ala Samoa lo'ifafa. Fa'pe'a'ala'tau'ia'au'atu'ina Amerika Samoa o'tautonu malo. Wa'ave'ala'tau'uma'Home of Record i Samika Samoa. Se'longa'ala'va'ala'etu'itunu'olo'olo'pepa ba'fa'pe'a o'o'e'ave' Amerika Samoa fai'ma Home of Record. O'ina'ala'uma'pe'a'ne'asau no'a. O'la'us'us'ani na'au'au'ele'ose'mtau'ufu'fin'ale'mtau'upu pe'a'ne'asau no'a itepusola. Fatai?
Fatai'ufionga ti'alu.
La'ku'ua'alu'ku'ua masalau'ua'ua'uma'ala'mlamai. E'anga'va'ala'ala'ali let'amba'fa'na'ula'ala emfay'anga.
E'afai'ole Samoa ole Amerika Samoa.
Yo'ole Amerika Samoa ele'ose Samoa majifu.
Amerika Samoa mai Samoa independent.
Ya. Ole'sa'au'anga'ufisi.
Ya.
S'a'au'ala'ema'ua.
Ole'anga'fu'na'ala'le'sa'ul'tulafono. Ole Samoa olona'matu'ua o'se'América Samoa.
Fatai'uma'mlamai'ufisi.
Ya. I fa'ula'le'inis'ufisi. Ole'ala'tul'va'anga.
Thank you for your patience to our witnesses. I see Mr. Font is here for the governor's office. So let us call Mr. Barry Font to the table. Then we will have, we have three witnesses who have requested time to testify. Tasimonga, Falangi'nga and Francis Andre Claude and Falangi'nga Claude. That will follow. Mr. Font, we bid you good morning and thank you for making the time to respond to our request for testimony on and on behalf of the governor's office with respect to the Senate Bill Number 39-5. And appreciate the governor's office making time to assist us in the deliberations on this bill. Good morning to you.
Good morning Senator To'oiola and honorable esteemed members of the Senate. Thank you for the invitation to come today. I'm sorry I was, I'm filling in for someone who was unable to make it this morning. So I'm sorry I didn't, wasn't here promptly at, at the time of the hearing. But again, very appreciative of the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Just a couple of points. One being that the the qualifications for members of the Fono from the House of Senate are spelled out in the Constitution, revised Constitution of American Samoa. And the first being United States National. And then going on to identify have lived in American Samoa for a total of five years and a bona'fide resident referring to the area of which you represent. For both and that, so in that district, I'll use the term district for brevity. At least one year preceding his election. So there are, I have some concerns about a change of this magnitude being made.
Speaking of the qualifications for the House of Representatives.
Yes, Senator. And, and the Fono as well. Both US National and then the requirement of five years and one year are in both the House and Senate.
Yes.
And so a change of this magnitude being made via legislative action rather than a constitutional amendment may present issues. So I just wanted to raise that as an, as a potential factor for you to consider. Another aspect is, and these dovetail well together, are the fact that this does take decisions out of the hands of the voters of American Samoa. Currently the restrictions are more broad. You, the Fono would be taking action to say basically that the voters have less of a choice of who they can choose as their, as their own leader. And this can be, I there was, there, this can rule out some significant individuals. My colleague, To'atase Tu'talale'apanga, who worked for Senator To'oiola when he was governor, recently returned to the island, moved to American Samoa at a very young age. Obviously served the government in, for, I think, ten years in the governor's office. But then did work as a, at a nonprofit. But recently moved or has been living partially off island. But doing that work again on behalf of the people of American Samoa. But he would not qualify under But he would not qualify under the proposed law to run, to have run in the last election because he has not resided, met the residency requirement. So, and you can run through a number of people who have maybe moved at a very young age, been born abroad, to missionary parents of, who are both American Samoan, for instance. Would they qualify under this law? So just requesting more deliberation on this, how strict that requirement is.
The concern with this bill, Ms. Font, is trying to enhance the contacts and familiarity of any candidate that is going to be running the government and this country literally. And the concern is that in, in observations from past elections, that we are concerned that more and more people who live outside and just decided they want to run for governor and then come over here and stay for 12 months. How much can you learn about the government, the people, the country in 12 months? And this is part of that concern that we, I believe we're looking at our future governors to be a little bit more familiar with the culture, with the people, the government and government operations and things that are happening here. 12 months just does not seem to be a sufficient time for anybody to really get a good hang of what concerns us the most in, in American Samoa, if you're going to be a person who wants to run the government. And just so you understand, I'm not asking your opinion of that. That will be the deliberation of the chamber. But this is the reason for the proposed change is to, to assure that people who are going to be running our government, you know, are truly informed. And so I know it's difficult to, you know, to really gauge what is truly, can it be three years, can it be, but it may be more. But certainly we're concerned with less than one, with one year or less. It, it just doesn't seem like a fair amount of time to really get familiar with the place and the people and what's going on down here. So yes, the example of Mr. Tuitala Leipanga can be a good example, but someone who had lived here then left here and then come back in for one year, that's an exceptional case. So we, I think we can see that as a possibility of exceptions, but it's just going to have to be considered with everything, with all the other concerns. But thank you for, do you have more to add to your testimony this morning, sir?
No, Senator, I, I do want to agree. I know you said my opinion isn't necessary, but having lived here for less than a year, I moved here in October of 2024. It is a very steep learning curve and part of, as we know, is even knowing what you don't know. I've tried to be good about that, but there's a lot to learn in American Samoa. And I think your, I can testify to ignorance is one way I, I can acknowledge your feeling that one year is not long enough. I don't expect it to be long enough for me anyway. So thank you.
We're just trying to make, make it fair for people who live here all their lives or have spent a good majority of their lives living here and, and are more familiar with. And our, our concern also is to enhance the value of the treaty of session where it requires the United States to do all it can to preserve the culture and the customs of the people, for the people in the country. So I think the, that's part of the intention and the hope of this bill is that we enhance on that agreed value when the session was negotiated between the United States and the people of American Samoa. But thank you very much for your appearance this morning and we appreciate the comments and the advice. And we will take it into consideration in due deliberation.
Faftae lava again for the opportunity to appear this morning.
O le anganga lerile tato te taufo'an tato fofo angai. I tulanga lo o iile fa'avae ma tusamale matofi'a o faipule masentoa. Ona i tofi'na ele o ma'aua ye tulanga pe ya ona ma'ua le fisi le le fianga le librestini. O tofi'na tato tele o a'fia ele ilulafono lea, na alo tofikovana manu tena kovana, a oisi tofi'a ele o o iile malosi o tulafon taufa'afi lea. Pe a'fae pasia. Ya faftae lausunga Tasimonga. Fi'tas. Fa'tu lausunga Tasi. Ya faftae yatu mo le anganga fia tuina maise monima'ua ya a'asfa'tuanga. Bo ni lapta inga fo'ia tusal tulafono taufa'afi wa ilumor mota.
Faftae tele lava lau fianga taita committee. Mo moa fia fa'taro fa'tu le. Depa iaman mano. Senate neita ea, lau fianga presidenti tau lo malei afu'an. Sui presidenti manga lei. Lau fianga taita committee sentoat tulafono malemano senate. Faftae mo le abno. O o blatiu ifaisa o monima'ua mole, mole pili lea le todweva dash five. Aifamalia tu ola o monima'ua le a'fai yatu le ngana fa'English. Tompan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of Senate Bill Thirty Nine Dash Five. A bill that I believe represents a long due and necessary step forward for the future of leadership in American Samoa. This bill proposes three changes to the qualifications of the highest officers, the lieutenant governor, the governor and lieutenant governor. First, the changes affirms that candidates must be of American Samoa ancestry, a respectful and empowering recognition of our cultural identity. Second, it strengthens the residency requirements, ensuring that those who seek the highest office must have lived among us, walked with us, and truly understand the challenges and aspiration of our people. Third, it maintains the age requirement of 35 years, which is proper in maturity and experience we expect of our leaders. These changes are not discriminatory or to exclude, but they are about connection. They ensure that our leaders are not only legally eligible, but culturally rooted and actively engaged in the life of our people and our territory. In fact, this bill opens the door for American Samoan descendants born in the United States to return home, reestablish ties, and serve provided they meet the residency requirement. That is not restriction. That's responsible inclusion. Compared to the other territories Guam, Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, and CNMI, the American Samoa stands alone in proposing an ancestry clause to, to our laws. This is not a weakness. It is a strength and it reflects our unique status, our values, and our commitment to self-determination. Some may ask why now? I believe in hope and I'm a dreamer and I say why not? Why not now? We are at the crossroads of tradition where tradition meets progress. This bill honors both. It ensures that our future governors, lieutenant governors, are not just qualified on paper, as you commented, Mr. Chairman, but they must earn to not only qualify on paper, but qualify in spirit, in service, and in shared experience. I urge the Honorable Senate here to pass bill, these changes to Bill Thirty Nine Dash Five, and affirm that leadership in American Samoa must be earned not just by law, but by loyalty, legacy, and lived experience among our people. Thank you and I welcome questions.
Faftae. Ta yatu lausunga monga ya mo le, mo le ma'ua matango fia. Umaya fo'ia saulangona ele tulafono taufa'afi. Ya pe ya fo'ia onetau fa'pula pulai le fatatalano ina o mta'upu ele amatanga o le ilailonga ya o tulafono taufa'afi. O le va'ila i tua ele te mi talu ona amata ya tato ilailonga ma me'aua tutupu ma iai. Ya olangona ye tau mfa'ia teu teu tulafono efama'usi a'atili. Ya mo le anga'i luma. O le se sengao o la tato territori, ma isi territori uma. Pa'una inee o le territori o lo'otu mau langa nu'u o lo'ola matuku. Oisi territori uma o e tangata nu'u moni. Ya o le otoa iainia la tau faina fa'a le anga nu'u ma fa'leatu nu'u. Otoa itotoa iua soifuo fa'palangi uma la tau. Samoa no soifuo fa Samoa. O le, o le alalea olangona o le mota. Et tau lava ona iiai se so'ta inga ele taita'itu la'ai mai ye taita'ia leatu nu'u malana faina malo ma'ona'a itetono leatu nu'u maleanga nu'u. Ya aifatai yatu lau. Fa ma'uni nga oia tulanga ma fa'tuanga o tuina mai. O le a'fa'pena'ona fa'auanga ina mo le ilailonga o la tato tulafono taufa'afi. Ya vano in fisi pe a'iai. A'liai ya, ya sauna iya lau fianga presidenti.
Pe ya ta'ngiame lau monima'ua ike la olango inga lpi'isau.
O le alava lausunga.
Ekele o la olango inga ono fa'apeo le faina bu'anga lforo ike okuli o e manga lei pe a'apea. Eke, ke, ke e le pili.
Ele a'ila va lau fianga presidenti. O lo'otu mau ma'fu ma'ile. I lo tadi tonu o lo'otu mau pele leutama taufa'e ilmota le. O le pili le. Ana pasia ele fatausanga bo o. O lo'oma va'ea ele tupu mele tato faina ta'ail tato malo o le te mi inee. Wa pulae tato e alon faanau ofoi mai sa'oo. O la tu tu'ai inee. Ai o mai fo'ia i'ela tu tofi'ile anga nu'u. Awo, waleva na o o mai o le masani. Na te tau lava na iiai se avanoa. E la tu emergia ile fa Samoa. To fo'ia mai to fa'masani tu mane anga nu'u. O lo'oi'ila ea. Ya probabai i'enei. Aitausia alofa'ea tu'ai. Ia ari'tausanga ia o toe masani. Toe fo'ia ile ngana tonua pui pu'inga o tato anga nu'u. Et aua fianga. Faftae yatu ai mo le pili. Sauna el presidenti. Le a'ia lo'ou tato nunga lava. Ta, ta'watu malfa'ani otispa'ia el pili. Faftae lava mo le.
Ke le lau mamalama lsi lau fianga taita committee.
Auiete, auiete o le lausunga monga. Ae mo liatu lfa'tai almot mo le monima'ua matango fia malemano lama. Ya wa siri ngia fo'ia ni isi tulanga e fa'ia ono fatosina inai alofinanga lo. Ya ele ailewa etal sa'uma'ava ile o le awala'ana a'ono olo'ava'ala ngona o oya o la Samoa. Et e fia pui pui tulanga iya mo'ou tangata molova'atu nu'u. Faftae mo le monima'ua neita ea. Ya ale a'atu fa solonga iya ele. Is this Mr. and Mrs. Claude? Ya talama'ia aui.
Mrs. Falangianga, Toa'au Claude and Francis Andre Claude. Good morning. On behalf of the Senate, we welcome you to our chambers and thank you for your desire to give testimony to help us in the deliberations of this, of this bill.
Ta'au manuia, Honorable Senators. My name is Francis Andre Claude and I am a recent resident of American Samoa. I'm married to a Kanga Samoa from Amenabi. And I would just like to commend the, the chamber on its efforts to nail down the qualifications of your leaders. I support all three amendments or changes that you are proposing. I have lived in, I'm retired military, United States Air Force, 20 years. I'm a Vietnam veteran and I've lived in Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, and I've been to Guam. And I would like just to say that the Honorable Senators here are specifically wanting to nail down your ancestry. And I think that it's very important that you do that and I'm in full support of that. I, I love living here. I've been here for four years so far and I just love living here. I've been married to my wife going on 48 years. And I've been associated with the Samoan community outside of American Samoa. I'm from Washington DC and I grew up there. And after the end of my military career, I ended there in Washington DC. So I'm very familiar with the current representative from American Samoa. I've known all of the previous representatives from American Samoa, as my wife has as well. And again, I would just like to say thank you so much for allowing me to address you this morning. And I would like to turn it over to my wife, if I may.
Mr. Claude, please accept my sincere apologies for mispronouncing your name. I did not mean any slight on that. It's just that I, I, although I aced French language in college, I, I don't think I remember anything other than merci. So.
Well, thank you, sir.
My apologies, so.
That happens all the time and it's quite all right.
Ms. Claude.
Thank you so much, Faftae lava. Otifa'itete ele ne itula.
[speaking Spanish] [speaking Spanish] He was also a fita fita, a Malini, back in nineteen forties. I graduated from high school in Balboa in San Francisco. I entered the military on my twentieth birthday. I was in the Air Force Intelligence. I was stationed in the Pentagon in Washington, D.C., where I met Andre during the Vietnam War. I also supported and assisted all our representatives, including Pima Ono, Lutali, Sunia, Eni Fale Mavaenga, and Amata, and I grew up in Washington, D.C. I lived all my adult life in Washington, D.C., working in the Pentagon. From there, I was also the volleyball coach for the Air Force Women's Volleyball Team, and I traveled during the year nineteen seventy-six. I was recommended to try out for the Olympics in nineteen seventy-six, which I played and became friends with Sugar Ray Leonard. He's a heavyweight boxer. I returned to Washington, D.C. with six months left on my re-enlistment or to make up my decision whether or not I'd want to stay in the Air Force or not. At that time, Congressman Ebner Micba from Illinois hired me to handle the top-secret SSI information in his office. From there, I went and worked for Congressman Henry Royce, who later became a judge in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I was also an employee of Congressional Budget Office, where Samoans' representative would come to Washington, D.C. and ask Congress for money. This is where that budget office comes from. This is the office where the money comes from for all U.S. states and U.S. territories. That is my background. I'm also a veteran. I'm also had just recently been appointed by the VA Secretary to be the Vice Chair for the VA Advisory Committee, which reports to him and also the U.S. Congress for issues and benefits for veterans here in the Pacific Rim as well as the Caribbean region. I'm also now have been assigned to be the Post Commander for American Veterans, MBET. It's an organization that assists veterans. And since I have returned in twenty, twenty-one, I have helped four hundred and eighty-seven United States American Samoan veterans with their claims, VA claims. I retired from the VA Advice, VA Department of Veterans Affairs, handling and managing the Compensation and Pension Department at the VA Regional Office in Florida, St. Petersburg, Florida. And since I've been here, I've been, I've been helping four hundred and eighty-seven. I helped one veteran yesterday. That makes it four hundred and eighty-seven veterans I have been assisting. Most of these veterans have called me and, and indicated that they have either got their one hundred percent or they have received an increase. That is my background in terms of my military life, civilian life. As far as my, my concern about the bill, I, I honor all of you for making certain that our culture, our ancestry, and our people run our government. I like every part of the qualifications that's listed, but there is only one part that I'd like to add to that, and that is That's what I see that's missing in this bill. [speaking Spanish] This is how I was taught by my dad. Fafatay lava, for the opportunity, I'm very honored to be here today and voice what I'm concerned about. Fafatay lava.
Mr. and Mrs. Claude, on behalf of President Tua'olo Fruan, Vice President Mangalei Luvi, and the members of the Senate, distinguished gentlemen from all the districts in American Samoa and Tautuila and Manua, we thank you for taking time to inform us of your support for the proposed legislation. Indeed, that is what we hope that we can accomplish for the security of our country and our government going forward in our relationships with the United States. And we will take your testimony in our deliberations, and hopefully that what we will pass will also be able to gain the support and approval of the House of Representatives and the governor so that we can put it into law. And as you testified, that is our first and foremost goal is to protect our place in the sun and our God-given tofi for all our generations in the future. And thank you for your appearance this morning. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Happy time, love.
Please come around and shake everybody's hand since we haven't met you before. I know I shake your hands on the golf course every day we meet when. Andre, again, I'm sorry I mispronounced your name. Yeah, [speaking Spanish]